To record it as well.
Well, Donna, did you say everyone should be able to call in and listen, but it's going at maximum? That can actually see the presentation?
That's kind of what I'm getting from... It's the first time I've ever had this many people join, to be perfectly honest. So everybody should definitely be able to call in. But I'm getting sort of an error message here that the people sharing the screen is full.
Yes. Well, if you record the webinar, that'll be great. You can just email me the link.
Okay.
And I'll make sure I post it in the email. And anyone that couldn't see your screen can kind of follow along later then.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'm just gonna go ahead and get rolling because we've got kind of short time here. And I want to make sure that we can kind of get through some of these things. Now, first and foremost, I want to give you guys my email address. So if questions come up that we don't get to today, or if you have questions or issues in the future, then please do reach out to me. My email address is L Allen, A-L-L-E-N, at princesscreases.com. So take a note of that. And then if you have any questions that do come up later on, then I'd certainly want to be able to address those. And if there's any issues that come up as well. So we rolled out Come Back New last year. It was our big campaign for last year. But then we sort of found that with some people, they were looking at Come Back New as they weren't real sure what did this mean to them. So we've kind of tried to define that a little bit better. And we've done that by doing... By putting out what is called the Princess Promise. And really, what this is intended to do is it's intended to give you guys, the travel agents, the people who are on the front lines, some sort of story to tell. Because the reality is, when we're trying to book people on cruises or sell them any kind of vacation, it's really you are the storyteller. It's about the story that you tell. And so we're trying to give you stories worth telling. And I'm trying to give you something new that you can offer your clients. It's not really about... For you guys, when you're trying to sell something, it's not about what you're selling. It's about why you're trying to sell it to the client. And you want to make sure that you're able to qualify and to quantify what your client is looking for. I'm not looking for every cruise client that's out there. There's a perfect client for Princess. But there's also a perfect client for Royal Caribbean. And if you've qualified that client, and they're perfect for Royal Caribbean, that's really where you should put them. Because at the end of the day, our industry as a whole depends on everybody being where they should be at that particular time. And there may be times in different people's lives when they fit better with Royal Caribbean or with celebrity than they do with Princess. And the reality is, is that we want you to have a really great idea of who Princess is, what our core values are, so that you can pair up the right person with Princess. We're not looking for everybody. We are not a theme park at sea. We're not ever going to be a theme park at sea. What we're looking for is we're really looking for those tactile travelers. We're looking for travelers who really want to get into a destination and see, feel, and touch a destination. And one of the ways that we're doing that is we've rolled out Ocean. Ocean stands for the One Cruise Experience Access Network. This was actually introduced by Arnold Donald at the Consumer Electronics Show in Las Vegas in January. This was really big, because it's the first time a vacation company has been invited to the Consumer Electronics Show, much less to be the keynote speaker. So Arnold Donald was the keynote speaker, and he rolls out Ocean Medallion vacations. So we're gonna kind of look at Ocean Medallion and what that means, what that means to you as a travel agent, and what it means for your clients as well. Ocean Medallion has two parts to it. The first is the actual physical medallion. This is about the size of a quarter. We're gonna send it to your clients in advance. Now, you, as the travel agent, this is one of the things that I really love about Ocean Medallion. I'm a former travel agent myself. I was a travel agent for 18 years. So I remember back in the old days when we had documents, right? It was awesome. You got a little packet in the mail, and you were able to give it to your clients. Well, the reality is, today, we don't have those. But with the Ocean Medallion, we are gonna be actually physically sending this medallion out in advance. Now, the default is gonna be for it to go directly to the client, to their mailing address. But you can go in there, and you can change that, so that the medallion comes to you. It comes beautifully wrapped in this fantastic package, and you'll be able to present that to your client. The second component of this is the Ocean Compass. And just like the compass of old days, the Ocean Compass literally guides your client through their vacation. So it's their Princess pattern that's personalized to them on a very, very minute level detail. So their Ocean Compass is going to be informed by two things. One, it's informed by their Ocean Ready profile, which they will fill out prior to sailing. This is going to take place of the cruise personalizer. So the cruise personalizer, when they go in, if they're booked on an Ocean Medallion cruise, when they go in, the cruise personalizer is gonna direct them over to Ocean Ready. Once they get over there, they're gonna fill out that profile. And it's much more in-depth than the cruise personalizer. So it gives you information like... Or it asks you questions, like what your likes and dislikes are. And the reason that it does that is because your Ocean Compass is very personalized to you. And it's gonna offer up things that are specific for you. The worst experience anybody can have is to go on a cruise and be on like day number five. And there's all these things that they... Look, there's a yoga class. So I like to do yoga. So there's yoga classes every single day. But I don't figure that out until day five of my seven-day sailing. And the reality is, is because there was too much information in that Princess pattern. And I got too many invitations to the art auction, so I got kind of lost in everything that was going on. What's great about the Ocean Compass is it's gonna direct your client through their vacation and offer up things that are specific to them. So your Ocean Medallion is a high-tech transmitter. Like I mentioned, it's about the size of a quarter. It's sent to them in advance. It's very secure. It is encrypted. There's no actual information that is stored on this Ocean Medallion. So this transmitter works with our ship's Intranet. And that's where that information actually is housed. And so if they happen to lose their medallion, because I know, being an old travel agent, I know for a fact some of my people are gonna lose the medallion on the way to the ship. What happens if that happens? If that happens, then once they get to the pier, we just issue them another medallion. Is there a cost for that? No, there is not a cost for it. And again, your medallion is a little transmitter. So there's no identifiable information that is on that transmitter. It simply works with our system. So it's highly secure, highly encrypted, but it works with the Ocean Compass. Each medallion ship is equipped with over 7,000 sensors and more than 650 medallion readers. What does that mean to your client? What we're trying to do here is we're trying to overcome objections. Remember, we're looking for the tactile traveler, right? We're looking for the passenger who wants to get deep into a destination, who wants to be able to see, feel, and touch a destination. And the first way we're gonna do that is at embarkation. Because you guys know what you hear it all the time. One of the biggest objections is, "I don't want to wait in line to get onboard the ship. I don't want to wait in line to have to go in and out of the ports." The medallion will make it so that you literally just walk onboard the ship. All of your passport and immigration information is done in advance. So you're not doing that at the pier. You're not putting in your credit card at the pier. You literally walk into the cruise terminal and directly onto the ship. So the medallion, it is free to all of the guests in all of the staterooms. Now, be a little bit prepared that this is going to have a little higher price point. It's gonna have a higher yield. It's not huge. It's, you know, hundreds of dollars. It's not in the thousands of dollars. But you are gonna see a little bit higher price point for medallion vessels. First thing to know on this also is that medallion is not a class of stateroom. I know that you're gonna see in some of the materials, medallion class. We've kind of removed the word "class" because that lends to a class of staterooms, right? That you've got to be in a particular type of stateroom. If it's a medallion ship, that is a type of vessel. Every stateroom onboard will be medallion. So everything from the insides all the way up to the suites will have this very personalized experience. My sister over at Seaborn, they make sure that they know everybody's name before they come onboard a Seaborn ship. They can do that with the number of passengers they have onboard their small ships. We aren't able to do that. But with the medallion, we now have a technology that allows us to be able to interact with your clients on a first-name basis. The crew will know your guest by name. They will have this very personalized experience. The medallion will allow them to walk onboard at embarkation. It opens their stateroom. And you can also use it to pay for food, for drinks, and things like that as well. The Ocean Compass, as mentioned, it does work in tandem with the Ocean Medallion. It's their digital portal to their vacation experience. If they don't want to take their smartphone, they don't have to take their smartphone. But your Ocean Compass can be accessed on mobile devices. There's also these onboard touchscreen. So you can see this little girl here. She's pointing. Because this is literally navigating their way. She's looking to go to a specific part of the ship. And so that she can go to one of these onboard touchscreens. And she can tell it where she wants to go, and it'll plot out the route for her. She can also look at it on her stateroom TV. If she gets lost somewhere along the way, you see in the bottom picture here, this woman's talking to a crew member, you can also have that personal interaction as well. The crew members will be able to direct you. And again, there's no fee to use this service. It is free. If any of you guys have experienced Princess at Sea, it kind of takes that Princess at Sea technology, where they're using that platform on our ship's Intranet. It only works onboard the ship, so it doesn't work, you know, if they're standing out on the pier. Or once they get off the ship, but onboard the ship, they'll be able to message each other. Some of those same features that you have with Princess at Sea, you will also have with medallion. You can do that private messaging. There are no roaming charges. You'll be able to locate your companions onboard. Me personally, as a travel agent, I escorted groups. I want my group members to be able to find me whenever I'm onboard during certain hours. If I happen to go to the casino at 4:00 in the morning, I don't necessarily want all of my clients that are onboard to know that's where I am at 4:00 in the morning. I can go dark. That is an option. And you can turn that off and on, because that's one of the first things that I'm looking at here. Okay, I can locate my companions. That's fantastic, especially if I'm escorting a group. But I also want to make sure that there's privacy here as well, and that I can decide whether or not I'm gonna go dark. Now, if you're traveling with children, children under 18, we think, we're not really sure exactly what that threshold is at this point. That's still being determined. They won't have the ability to turn their location off. So you'll always be able to locate your children. This is fantastic. I was traveling with my 16-year-old, so he can sign in and out of the kids program. But now I'll be able to look at my smartphone, and I'll be able to locate him wherever he is. It helps you navigate around the ship. You can also have food and drinks delivered anywhere that you are. You can purchase gifts anywhere that you are. So say that you're... It is waterproof. It is. So say you're sitting out by the pools, because it is waterproof. So say you're sitting out by the pool, and you forgot sunscreen. You can actually have that delivered to you out by the pool. So there's a couple of features. It's called "here and now." So I'm sitting out by the pool here, and I need sunscreen now. Or you can order it there and then. So I'm in my cabin. I know I forgot my sunscreen. I'm gonna have it delivered to me out by the pool. And the way that the crew member is gonna recognize me is they've got sort of their little iPads. And there's actually a little bubble, and they can see your picture. And the closer that they get to you, the bigger your bubble gets. And that's how they're gonna be able to identify your clients and how they're gonna be able to refer to your clients by name. You'll be able to track your cruise itinerary. You'll be able to see the day's events. But the events that are gonna show up first are the events that I've raised my hand for. So I'm not gonna get all of those invitations to the art auction, because I've never bought a piece of art onboard. But I still get 42 invitations to the art auction, as it currently sits in the Princess system. That won't happen on a medallion vessel. I will have things served up to me via my Ocean Compass that are things that I've sort of raised my hand for, or I've said that I'm interested in. There's also some interactive gaming that's going to be happening. And this actually starts to take place whenever they fill out their Ocean Ready profile. And there's some interactive gaming that they'll be able to do the whole time. So whether they're in the casino, or whether they're out somewhere else onboard the ship, there's interactive gaming. So how will Ocean Medallion change the way we cruise? It's taking a Princess product that you guys already know, and we're giving them that VIP level of service. So you'll be able to get that high-tech, high-touch level of service for all of our guests that are onboard. It's an enhanced level of personalization, to the point where, as I said, they'll be able to specifically offer up things that your clients are interested in. It's an enhanced level of an elevated experience, but it's still at that premium price point. So you're getting sort of a luxury experience, but you're still getting it at a premium price point. You've got all of the benefits of technology, but it doesn't have that real techie feel. And that's the biggest problem with really being able to articulate what medallion is, because medallion is more of a feeling. Sure, it's technology, but it's going to enable that very personalized experience. That the way that this comes off is that there's no technology behind it. The way that it's gonna feel is it's gonna feel like a personalized experience, but it doesn't really have that very techie feel. Now, if you've got millennials that are traveling, or kids that are traveling, and they want to be highly involved in the technology side of it, they can. But if you've got seniors traveling, that they're like, "Look, this is Big Brother-ish. I don't want anything to do with this," then they can opt out of it. You could actually still even get a key card. It won't... We're not sure whether or not it's actually still gonna open your staterooms. They're gonna have to look at that. But if they want to completely opt out of this technology, they can do that. And it also removes a lot of the friction points associated with travel, because some of the things that your clients always tell you is, "I've gotta wait in these long lines," and, you know, it's just sort of a cattle call. Well, we're removing those friction points, so that we're making ocean travel more palatable to a larger group and audience. Travel agents, now the ones that I've talked to have been very excited about this new innovation. One, it gives you something new to talk about with your clients. It makes it much easier to service your clients. Managing groups, from my perspective, if I'm onboard with 100 passengers, it's so much easier to me, because I can push out group messages to them. We've got these enticing new features that are meant to lure those new-to-cruise prospects. So we're definitely looking for those people who are new to cruise. We're not necessarily looking to steal market share from celebrity, right? We're looking to be able to bring people who are land-based over to an ocean vacation. So we're trying to also re-engage our past Princess guests, but we're trying to appeal to that tech-savvy audience as well. And a higher NPS score, which is our net promoter score, we're really in tune to this. And the way that we get those is by the surveys that we do at the end of a cruise. We're very interested in that. We want to have our clients return. We want our clients to know. This also gives us the ability to do service recovery as well. So if, say, somebody has an issue onboard the ship, we'll be able to address that right away. It's not gonna come back to you at the end of the cruise. We'll be able to see that there's a problem, because they're actually gonna be able to rate every single part of the cruise as they go throughout the cruise. So they'll be able to rate service, and they'll be able to rate their servers. All of that, they'll be able to do right away. So let's see. Do you have the option of the bracelet or the necklace piece? Yes, you actually do. So what you'll be able to do is, once you do your Ocean Ready profile, it'll give you the option of purchasing any kind of optional accessories that you want. So you see this girl right here in the bottom. She's got it in a waterproof bracelet. You can do that. There's necklaces that they can use. They will actually get another one every single time they cruise. So they'll be able to personalize even the medallion itself. When they receive it, it'll have their name and sale date already engraved on it. But they'll be able to pick the color of it. So if they want it to show their loyalty level, or if they want it to be pink, because all they wear is pink, those things you can do. And then, of course, you can be rest assured that I'm gonna sell you accessories to go with it, right? So they will be able to do that. They will have to pay for the accessories, but the medallion itself is free. They don't have to pay for the medallion. And satisfied customers, of course, need more referrals for you. Premium fares also equal higher commissions as well. So how are we getting this information out there? We're using medallion moments. There's a consumer series. There's also a travel agent series as well. And the series is being distributed via email, via Facebook, and website. This in the bottom picture here on the far right-hand side, that's John Churnesky, our Vice President of Sales. And he has put out a whole slew of different types of videos, from how to get Ocean Ready to what it looks like whenever you receive it. So that you can see, from the travel agent perspective, what your clients are going to see. Oh, okay. So I do see that someone's saying, "If you all could push *6 and mute yourselves unless you have a question," then that'll help with some of the other people who are on the line. If you are not friends with John Churnesky on Facebook, please definitely friend him on Facebook. He is very personable, really, really great guy, and he's putting out some really great information. So our Ocean Medallion ships, we've got the Regal Princess in November, the Royal Princess in January, the Caribbean Princess in March, and then the Island Princess in May. So what does this mean to you as a travel agent? That means you're gonna be able to cover most of the world with a medallion ship. You will have the Regal Princess, who's gonna start in the Caribbean. And then she'll be doing Europe next year. The Royal Princess will be in Europe in summer of next year. The Caribbean Princess, which is a huge story in and of herself, will be medallion in March of 2018. And she will then be in the Caribbean in the summer of 2018. That's new. You guys probably know, we've been out of the Caribbean in the summer for a couple of years. So she's coming back to the Caribbean. She's gonna be doing both Caribbean and Panama Canal sailings starting in March of 2018. We will also have the Island Princess coming out in May. That May sailing takes her to Alaska. You guys know that she does the voyage of the glaciers. So you'll be able to offer Ocean Medallion ships in Europe, in the Caribbean, and in Alaska for next year as well. And this is a quick video on medallion. Let's see here. You probably won't be able to hear the audio on this, so I'm just gonna kind of talk over it. This has given you sort of an overview of Ocean Medallion. You can see John Churnesky here. And he is actually doing this huge series of different medallion moments that you guys can either get via Facebook, via email, or you can also find them on one source as well. So I highly encourage you guys to take a look at those and try to get sort of tuned in with them, because he's constantly doing these updates. One of the other new things that we have out this year is we do have Group Shore Excursions. Again, I'm an old travel agent, so my first questions are gonna be travel agent-related, right? The best thing about these Group Shore Excursions is that they are offered to you net. So there is income potential to you guys. What constitutes a group? You can see, these are all my questions. What constitutes a group is 28. Your break-even point is at 28, where the price of these becomes the same or pretty close to what a public shore excursion is. But you can have any size group. So if you've got four people that want a private shore excursion, you can do that. If you've got up to 50 people that want a private shore excursion, you can do that as well. So this kind of gives us the ability to work full circle. And again, it gives you that revenue potential, because you've got net pricing. We're getting really, really great pricing on shore excursions. I don't know if you guys have noticed here recently, but the price of our shore excursions has really come down. This gives you the ability to offer net pricing on custom tours, where you can mark up the cost and build in your commission. They're exclusive to you. You can do tours in every single port. But you're using our buying power to leverage the cost of these shore excursions. You have the onboard service, so you're not going through one of these third-party vendors. You actually have the service onboard as well. You've got our quality tour operators. We've already vetted them. We know that they're really great tour operators. We can customize these excursions for your group's interest and for their language as well. So if you're in Quebec, and you need it in French, then we can do it in French as well. You have exclusive coaches and transportation. That includes tenders, too. So if we're in a tender port, then you would have an exclusive tender as well. They're very budget-focused, and there is a dedicated group department to take care of all of the arrangements. There is also a complimentary ticket for the tour leader as well. And as I mentioned, we do have multilingual guides available. You have priority tour dispatch arrangements. You also have guaranteed returns to the ship. So if you're doing these with, you know, some third-party vendor, you don't have that guarantee that they'll be back to the ship on time. But if you do it through Princess, then you've got the onboard service, and we know for sure that they're going to come back to the ship on time, or we will wait for them. You also have a really easy payment option. So you guys can use your client's credit card to pay for this. You can send in a check for it. There's lots of easy payment options, and we'll overcharge it. The same way that we do on the staterooms right now. Say you want to overcharge it for your commission, or if you're leading a group and you want to overcharge it, you can always do that. Now, what happens if the port is canceled? Here's my next question, right? If a port is missed, or if they have to cancel a port for weather or whatever reason, the full refunds are issued to the original form of payment. So that brings it all kind of full circle here. It's really easy on your part. You don't have to apply for those. We can design really unforgettable adventures that are tailored to any of your group's passions. We do all of the work, and you guys look really great for it. We've done all kinds of special events, private overlands, culinary tours. All of these things are things that we are already doing. And we want to make sure that you guys know that it is available for you. There is a direct department that you can reach out to for Group Shore Excursions. Their email address is groupshoreexcursions@princesscreases.com. So we've got a couple of sales that are going on right now. Summer On Sale, which is 2017, that goes through the end of April. And then our Come Back New Sale, which is going on right now, goes through the end of May. Now, what I want you guys to start looking at these... The way I want you to start looking at these as a travel agent is there's always, for the most part, gonna be two sales in the market. The one that is further out is gonna have more value adds. The one that is tactical, that is closer in, as you can see right here, this is up to, you know, 40% off per guest. You've got lower third and fourth guest fares. But they also have non-refundable deposits, too. So look at these. Know what's available and what's different out there. I mean, I know that you guys aren't necessarily marketing to these. Whenever I was a travel agent, I'm not gonna sell based on the sales that are out there, right? I'm gonna tailor the sales to whatever it is that my client is looking for that day. So know what's available. Know that you can always find these in one source, and that you can get more information. I want to remind you guys about future cruise sales. This is really important. These bookings automatically come directly back to you. So they can do this onboard. There's a reduced deposit of $100, shipboard credit of up to $300 per stateroom. They can sign up using Princess at Sea or their Ocean Compass. The deposits are fully refundable. They have up to two years to use them. And if they don't use them, they're again automatically refunded back to that form of payment. So there's nothing, no reason for them not to use it. And it's really great, because the bookings automatically come back to you. Now, the limited-time offers are combinable with those FCC deposits. They're also combinable with the military benefit, which is good in both the U.S. and Canada. And one thing that I do want to point out is that they don't have to be retired or active duty. If they're veterans, if they have service, then they will get this onboard credit. And it combines with all of the other onboard credit that's out there. Know that you guys have those quarterly cruise sales that come from headquarters. You can combine your group amenities, the limited-time offers, the military benefit, future cruise credit. You can combine all of that stuff for really great onboard credit. I quickly wanted to point out Japan. I know that we're down to like the last minute or so here. But I want you guys to be aware of this product. I lived in Japan for three years. This ship is phenomenal. She does... She was kind of retrofitted for the Japanese... she was kind of retrofitted for the Japanese market. So there are things that she's got onboard that are not onboard any of our other ships, which the Azumi, the Japanese Onsen is onboard. And this actually is on the back of the ship where the Horizon Pool typically is. So that's been converted, there's two home ports in Japan, Tokyo and Kobe, and we are there year-round. So know that this is available for your clients, really, really great itineraries. I've looked at these itineraries in depth because I actually do the training for our BDMs on these itineraries. These are phenomenal, the ship is phenomenal. It's a very immersive experience. And remember, that's what Princess is looking for when you qualify your clients. If they're looking for an immersive experience, if they're looking for an experiential cruise, those are the clients that we're looking for, those people who want to see, feel, and touch a destination. So I will end it there. Does, let me look and see if there's any questions that I haven't answered. They do have to pay for the bracelets or if they want any kind of optional accessories, they do have to pay for those. But the medallions themselves are free and as I mentioned, they are mailed directly to the client or to you if you would like to have them mailed to you. Do we have any other questions, real quick, that I didn't answer before I let you all go? Well, not hearing any more questions, please do reach out to me if something comes up. Again, my email address is lallen@princesscreases.com and do feel free to reach out to me at any time. I'd be more than happy to help you guys with any problems that you have or get on a conference call if you guys need that as well. So thank you for joining me and have an awesome day.